Welcome to the Board of Adjustment Study Session. Today is October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. And looking at our current agenda for today, it looks like we have just one case to be heard. But before we get started into case discussion, I just want to bring to your attention that next month for November twentieth, we do not have any cases scheduled for next month. So again, just a reminder, there's no, no public hearing for November. Looking at December, our public hearing that would be scheduled for the month of December would be held on the eighteenth. We potentially have four cases for that month. That's three residential projects and one commercial. At this time, I just kind of want to get an idea. I know it's a little early and maybe folks may be scheduling vacation or some time off, but if you already know, just if you could let me know at this moment, or is there anybody here that would be able to make the December eighteenth public hearing? It would be a hybrid, so you could attend virtually if it's necessary, but we are planning on still holding it at the Mayor and Council chambers. So if you could just let me know if you would be able to attend that, that'd be great. Bonnie, I see you can attend it. Bruce, okay? And Mike, okay?
I'm actually not able to attend. I have a work retreat scheduled that day at the same time.
Okay. Thank you, Miranda.
That's another quorum, of course.
Correct. We are missing Irma right now. But if she's able to attend, that would make the four. All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and let's go ahead and jump in today's case. So for today, we have C ten twenty-four zero six. That's the Santana residence. It's a new detached carport and a shed. The property is located at fifty-nine zero two East Ryan Place. So here, the project consists of a, of a new carport primarily to provide some relief from the weather and the elements. That's going to be located in the backyard for primarily a camper. And leave another vehicle, as you can see here by the site plan, it will be located at the southwest corner of the property. There is a shed at the existing location that's going to be relocated in order to make room for the, for the carport. Bruce, did you have a?
Yeah, I think it's a boat, is what he said, I think.
Okay, okay. Is this some kind of recreational vehicle? Okay. So that's the purpose of the carport, again, located in the southwest corner of the property. This being the most lot, excuse me, the most logical location for the carport, seeing that they do have room up here in the front. But again, this would require a variance as well for it being detached and in the front yard. It's also more visible if it's located in the front yard. So it really does make sense to locate it in the rear yard of the property. The variances that the applicant is going to be requesting before the board is to allow a relocation of the shed with the reduced set side perimeter yard setback from ten feet to zero feet. So remember the shed in the southwest corner of the property, basically relocating it north along that property line. So they are still needing that setback reduction for the shed. The other three variance requests deal with the carport. You have the reduced side street per yard perimeter yard setback from twenty to eight inches, and that's measured to the west lot line. And then a reduced rear perimeter yard setback from seven feet eleven to nine inches measured to the south lot line. Oh, I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, let me ask you about the numbers one and two. They appear to apply to the same property line, the west property line with different required number of feet.
I'm sorry, Mike, that you are correct. It's actually should be ten feet for variance request number two. Required is ten feet, but the requested setback still remains the same. It's the eight inches to the west lot line.
Okay, so they're redundant in at one level, but the more restrictive being the second one with the eight inch, well, the, the reduction is to eight inches, not zero. The first one indicates says the reduction to zero. The second indicates it's a reduction to eight inches is one of them incorrect or because they both can't be right, is that right?
Well, the shed is a separate structure, and again, it's just being relocated to the north of the carport. And it's going to be keeping in line with the original location of where it was, except it's just moving north. So it is at a zero setback. So that's, that's where that's coming from. As far as the new carport that's being proposed, it is proposed at being eight inches from that lot line. Here, let me go back to the site plan.
Yeah, they're just gonna pick that thing up and shove it against the fence. It's just gonna physically move it.
Right. So there's the, there's the shed right here. And then here's the carport. So the shed's just moving north. Carport's coming right up here.
Okay, the shed is gonna have the eight inch setback and the carport is gonna have the zero setback?
The shed is gonna have the zero setback and the carport is having the eight inch setback.
Okay, so a little offset. Okay, I understand better now.
He's got, he's got that shed shoved up right to the corner of his building, too. That's kind of weird. If you look at that floor plan again. See the, see the shed, see right there, the corner of that, the corner, corner of the houses. Nobody's gonna be able to walk past that thing, but hey.
Right, yeah, it's gonna be right about here. Just enough room to make for the carport. So that's, that's the location of it, and those are the variances being requested. The last one has to deal with the height. Now, for a detached accessory structure with a pitched roof, we, we take the measurement from design grade to the midpoint of the pitch. So here, they are proposing a thirteen point eight foot height. The code allows up to twelve feet. So they are just a little over that with the height. So that's the final variance request that they're asking for is to allow the structure to exceed that twelve foot height.
Mark, what is the reason for the extra height?
So with the extra height, I believe there was a, again, I, I can't recall, and maybe Georgia, if you could fill in, I think it's a camper with also, you know how tall campers are, they, they need that extra ceiling height to make room for it.
He's, he's, he's got that boat on a trailer, too, probably, and he needs that for be able to fit that thing underneath the
Correct.
It is probably a camper, yeah.
He mentions both in the application. He mentions both a camper and a boat.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it's also a prefab structure, so it probably comes with a certain amount of, you know, here, this is one we've got, take it or leave it type of thing.
Correct. So with that staff's position on the, the variance request is that we don't have any objection to what's being requested. As we saw, there, there are options by putting it in the front yard again, but that would require a variance as well. It kind of makes sense to put it in the backyard only because it's out of visibility from the front yard. It's just kind of a carport that's needed in order to protect those recreational vehicles that the owner has. And we have received a total of seventeen written protests and one approval. Five of those protests are located off the map. In other words, they're outside of the notice area or there was a register, there was an address that was not registered within that notice area. You should have received a copy in the email of the map and all the comments that were submitted. Did everybody get those?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mark, could you summarize the predominant reason for the objections?
Sure. So from, from what I can tell, a lot of the protests had to do with the aesthetics. Also compatibility with the neighborhood. There was concerns about, you know, the structure could lower property values. And blocking mountain views was also a common comment regarding that. Do we have any additional questions from the board members?
Yeah, it seems like a lot of his neighbors seem to be unhappy with that. He only had one, one, one neighbor in favor of the whole thing.
Yes.
Would the, would now be the appropriate time or during the hearing to ask about things like whether or not there's data to support the idea that, that a carport of this nature would negatively impact property values? Is that something to talk about here or in the hearing?
I mean, I think it's okay to ask the clarifying question, but I can answer you that we don't have that kind of data. We don't track property values necessarily and the impact to them based on development proposals. Our department doesn't. There might be private sources of that data, but that's not something that we really track and generally economics either on either side of an argument are not something that are considered in part of the variance or the findings for the variance.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, a, yeah, it's gonna hurt my property values is a pretty common complaint you see from it comes up in a lot of these variances, that's for sure. You could almost, you could almost expect to see that coming up each time.
Bonnie, you have your hand up?
Yes, it seemed to me when I read through the protests that most of the protests were objecting to the height of the new structure and that there was really very little protest about the reduced setbacks. Would that be accurate?
Yes, I would, I would agree with that. I would agree with that, Bonnie.
So is it possible when we make a motion to approve part of it, but not another part? So if we, if we were to approve the reduced setbacks, but not the increased height, is that possible in a motion for this case?
You might as well, you might as well just be telling him he can't build it because I think he had height to fit his stuff under there. So either, either you give him his setbacks and the height, or you just don't give it to him because I just, that's my impression.
And that's kind of what I was leaning towards, too. Elisa, did you have anything to add?
I was just going to state that it may not be feasible for him to use it the way that he envisioned. So I think that's a fair question. But logistically, the board can grant one or more of the variances and not all of them. You're not under obligation to grant all of the variances, but I think it's important that if you are not granting one or more of them, that there's a rational reason why that doesn't meet the findings that clear in the motion, if that's the route that ultimately the board takes.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question of curiosity, Mark. I see a lot of the people on the screen here. Does that mean they are signed on or anything? Do, do people get to listen in to our to our discussions?
Yes, yes, they do.
Okay. Just checking.
Anything else?
Not really.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Chair, we'll go ahead and if you'd like to, we can break from study session and resume the public hearing at one thirty.
Okay.
Okay, I'll see everybody back at one thirty.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Hamblin, roll call, please.
All right, one second. Bruce Dawson.
Here.
Miranda Schubert.
Here.
Irma Duran. Absent. Bonnie Paulus.
Present.
Michael Marx.
You didn't hear me, here.
Thank you, Michael. Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Tucson Board of Adjustments for October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. This meeting is being recorded. By joining, you are giving consent for this meeting to be recorded. An introduction of each case will be made by staff. At the conclusion of staff's presentation, the applicant or the applicant's representative will have the opportunity to speak. For the record, please tell the board your name and address and state your request. At the conclusion of the applications, applicant's presentation, other persons wishing to speak in favor of the request may indicate so by raising a hand on the feature of the reactions tab and bottom of your screen. Please be sure to state your name and address when recognized by the chair. When called by the chair of, by the chair of the board, those wishing to speak in opposition to the applicant's request may indicate so by the same manner using the raised hand feature. The chair may allow the applicant the opportunity to, for a brief rebuttal. The chair will then close the public hearing and open up a discussion by the board members. At the conclusion of the board's discussion, a motion will be made and if seconded will be voted on. All presentations must be directed solely to the board and not to staff or members of the audience. All presentations to the board must also be only on the item brought before the board. Presentation on matters unrelated to the request will not be heard. The decision of the Board of Adjustments may be repealed to the Superior Court of Pima County by filing a complaint for special action with the Pima County Superior Court's Superior Court Clerk's Office within thirty days of the board's decision. For additional information on this filing process, please contact the Superior Court Clerk's Office or an attorney after today's public hearing. If you are going to give testimony today, please be brief and to the point. Repetition of the testimony already given by other witnesses is not necessary. The chair may invoke a time, time limit if deemed necessary. Before you testify, please remember state your name and address, and a testimony aboard must be given under oath. At this time, I am asking the city staff to raise their right hand and repeat. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yes.
Thank you. A reminder, please be sure to mute yourself and turn off your camera unless you are addressing the board. Mr. Castro, please call our first case.
Actually, I'm, I'm sorry that I'm gonna do it. My name's Georgia. Mr. Chair, members of the board. The case today is C ten twenty-four oh six Santana Residence, new detached carport and shed. Nathaniel Santana, five nine zero two East Ryan Place, R one zoning. The applicant's property is an approximately point two seven acre lot zoned R one residential and is developed with a single family dwelling in two detached accessory structures. The applicant is proposing to construct a detached metal carport and to relocate an existing shed. The applicant is requesting the following variances. One, allow the relocation of a shed with a reduced side perimeter yard setback from ten feet to zero as measured to the west lot line. Two, allow the construction of a carport with a reduced side street perimeter yard setback from excuse me, twenty feet to eight inches as measured to the west lot line. Three, allow the construction of a carport with a reduced rear perimeter yard setback from seven feet eleven inches to nine inches as measured to the south lot line. Four, allow the construction of a carport with a height of thirteen feet nine inches measured from design grade to the midpoint between the eve and ridge of the pitched roof, which exceeds the maximum height of twelve feet for detached accessory structure, all as shown on a submitted plan. The engineering section of Planning and Development Services Department has no objections or adverse comment. T D S D staff has no objection to applicants requested variances. It is the opinion of staff, there are special circumstances applicable to the property that granting of the variances will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injuries to other property or other or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located, and that the variance requested is the minimum needed to afford relief and the least modification possible of those U D C provisions which are in question. To date, we have received one written approval, seventeen written protests, five of which are off the map. In summary, the protests cite concerns about aesthetics, compatibility with neighborhood, lowering property values and blocking mountain views. For the record, board members have been provided a copy of these protests. Mr. Chair, members of the board, this concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff?
Yeah, I've got, I've got one. I'm just curious whether of all those protesters, did any indicate they would be present to further explain their protest during the hearing?
Yes, I, I believe they did mark that, that they would be at the hearing today.
Oh, okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
I don't.
Okay, then I will open the floor to the applicant or the applicant's representative to speak on behalf of the application.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Santak, could you raise your right hand, please? You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you?
I do.
Good, okay.
Okay, I'd like to share my screen if you don't mind.
Problem.
I think I need to be enabled the co-host to do this. Just give me one moment. There we go. Let's see here. Okay, so you should be seeing my screen now. If you don't, please let me know. So I'm not gonna repeat too much of what was already repeated earlier. Thank you for hearing my case, by the way. Let's get straight into it. So let's talk about the surrounding zone. So this is the property here, five nine zero two East Ryan Place. There's four different zonings surrounding this area, including the R one zone, which is where the property is. There's the R two zone, the O three zone, and the R three zone. So it's pretty diverse in the neighborhood. We have townhomes, we have duplexes, we have multifamily homes, and of course, single family homes. The neighborhood itself is very diverse and it consists of like very unique houses, right? It was built, houses were built between the nineteen fifties and the nineteen seventies. So there's really no like single design language here. It's not, it's not a cookie cutter neighborhood. Every house is unique and has had additions over the last, you know, seventy odd years of existence. The houses include single, single sloped as well as gabled roofs, as well as flat roofs. There's some taller gabled roofs surrounding the area, and I'll show some pictures on that. There's no HOA, so there's really no stipulations on the color, the shape, or the appearance of your, of your house. You can make it look mid-century modern, contemporary, industrial, right? There's no, there's no rules in this neighborhood particularly. Let's go to the bird's eye view. So this is a nice picture. Starting here in the middle, you could see the purple box, the little shed that's part of this variance is actually in that image. And then you do have the new addition, the new carport here. That's in the southwest corner. Let's go ahead and follow this little purple arrow and look at the, the little shed. This one, who knows how long this, how old this shed is, but it was in the southwest corner and it moved it recently to the northwest. It's eight by nine, seven foot tall, under two hundred square foot. I do want to keep using this. I did recently move it before I submitted this permit request. So it did trigger the need to add this as part of the permit, and that's why it's part of this variance, really, to make room for the carport. And it triggered this need for the variance. So this is the carport itself, little, at least the area that it will take up. It's twenty-eight by twenty-eight. This does not exceed the gross floor area that I'm allowed to build. So I'm certainly allowed to build an accessory structure of this size in this, this property. It's within the fifty percent of the, the G F A. There's some critical dimensions here I want to, want to mention. So you have Sahara Avenue on the west of the property. This road goes from north to south. The road stops here and then, and then there's a, there's this setback distance of thirty-five and a quarter feet between the property line and the edge of the road. And there's also this alleyway in the south where we, it's seventeen feet wide and there's a trash can pickup that's a shared trash can. So you get the big garbage trucks get to drive through here, exit out of the alleyway at the same place where you'll enter through this carport. So the entrance of the carport is on this west side. The backyard itself is picketed fence, and it does surround the whole rear of the yard, which will conceal, you know, the boat and the camper. About fifty percent of it's about a little bit less than six foot fence. So this is really nice for me. I like to conceal this stuff. I don't want it in the front. I think it would look like an eyesore. Let's see. Next slide. So the reason for the carport. So I do own several recreational vehicles, boats, campers, trucks, cars. You can see it from the aerial views. These are some of the reasons that I really need it. So here's a picture on the top right. This is the boat. This is with the, the tarp pulled back. You can see the gel coat is certainly damaged, and this was not like this a couple of years ago. This is sun damage. I'm sure we're, we've been in Arizona long enough to know that this happens. This is certainly triggering the need to protect the boat. The boat itself is pretty tall as well. It does have a wake The boat itself is pretty tall as well. It does have a wakeboard tower. So that, that is one of the reasons that's driving the height. Here's another picture of the boat. It's pretty much degraded interior. This needs to be replaced. This is with a tarp on top, so the tarp doesn't do much here. Here's the camper. Here's some deterioration of the roof, cracking, scoring from the UV rays. And here's a car that's parked out front, right? I'm not limiting what I can park in the carport. Any of these vehicles can park in there. But what's really driving it are these two things, the boat and the camper. I think it's reasonable in our climate to want to be able to protect your vehicles and I think I should be allowed to do that. The height, like I mentioned earlier, is driven by the boat and the camper. There's no modifications to the boat or camper. That's how you buy them. They're just inherently tall vehicles and tall items. They're registered. They're DOT, they're allowed to be on the road. They're just tall. And that's just the nature of them. There's no modifications to them. And I'm not asking to stand on top of the camper and then build the carport above me. I'm really asking for the minimum variance necessary. There's like maybe six to eight inches above the tallest part of the camper so that it fits underneath the carport and protects it from the sun. I'm not asking to stand on top of it and build eighteen foot carport. I did look at alternate designs that includes the flat roofs or single slope roofs made by these, these people here. Uh, there was, it would still require variance and it would still require a setback variance as well for the height. So it wouldn't really solve any problems. It would also have some functional issues that would include some, just the, the structure of it. You would have to have a vertical member in the middle because it can't span the full distance with the single slope or flat roof. So it would definitely reduce the maneuverability, which would make it a little unsafe to back in the boat or the camper. And also doesn't provide as much shade. So the whole point is to provide shade with the rapt eaves and the gabled roof. You get a little bit more shade during the winter months with the gabled roof. All right, let's go to the next slide here. So justification for the reduced side street and rear perimeter yard setback and the height. So move, like Mark mentioned earlier, moving the carports to the front would still require variance. It would stick out a lot more for the neighbors in this part of the neighborhood. And it would disrupt this mature vegetation. There's some really nice agave that's been planted here for a very long time, as well as some mesquite trees. In order to access the carport, it would be off of this area. We'd have to get rid of this vegetation. So I don't think that's really, really an option. If we were to move the carport further back into the yard, if you look here, there's actually a power line here. There's a big palm tree. The exit out of the, the house into the backyard is right here. So it would make the yard pretty much unusable and it would cause other problems to get that twenty foot street setback for the carport. The carport location is driven by the plot shape and the configuration of the primary structure. The proposed location is the most logical, reasonable location available. Any alternate would still require a variance. The location of the carport does not impede or obstruct traffic exiting the right of way because of that thirty five feet distance. The pedestrians and other vehicles will be able to see me exit the carport and be able to watch out as I'm doing that. I can also be able to see them if there being that thirty five feet between the exit. And there are several examples in the neighborhood where there's carports and sheds that don't meet the minimum setback. Almost every other house has this setback trend that they're following, which they're not following the UDC for these setbacks. I'm looking to have that same ability. During the long-term safety concerns or effects to the public travel relative to the location of the carport in the streets, the existing residence is in, in this, in a neighborhood with similar sized lots, existing detached garages and carports is very common in the neighborhood. So this would not grant any special privileges. And for the extra height, this extra height is, is exceeding the twelve foot by one foot nine inches. So this is really not something that is necessarily perceivable to most people unless you have both carports side by side. It's one foot nine inches. It's pretty trivial. And the code is not really one size fits all. That's why we do have this variance. In this R one zone, you are allowed to build two stories up to twenty four feet. So the reason for accessory structures being limited, I don't know, but the way, the amount that I'm exceeding it is really, is really small enough, one foot nine inches. And it's, it's for those, those recreational vehicles. And then a little bit more about the neighborhood. Neighborhood does have gabled roof homes that will be similar in height and I do have some pictures of that. So this carport's not gonna stick out. Like I said, it's only one foot nine inches above the code. It's not gonna look unusual. So let's look at some examples of, in the neighborhood of the reduced side street perimeter yard setback. So in this top left, top left image here, you have two properties. You have a shed, you have a carport. This is exiting out in a, in into an alleyway. This certainly doesn't meet the six foot or two thirds of the height setback requirement. This is a carport, again, doesn't meet that setback requirement. This is another example here in the center. This is a shed. It's right on the property line. You have the wall and then you have a shed, doesn't meet the setback. Here's a carport that's facing a street. Their property line is a little bit where those bricks are. This is not twenty foot. Here's another example in the alleyway. This is a garage, a metal garage with a gabled roof setback is not there for the entrance of a carport. And these three examples are really good. These were actually built with the homes original. Right? And the reason I want to show this is that this road here, this road here, this road here is the same road that I'll be going into my carport from. So it is, it is natural to come off of Sahara into a garage or into a carport. So I'm doing that exact same thing. I'm, I'm actually right up here, so off of Sahara into my carport. So that's a common flow of traffic. Here's some examples of tall buildings and structures in the neighborhoods. Let's, this neighborhood, let's talk about the top left one here. This is the TEP Transmission Center. This is right smack dab in the middle of the neighborhood. You have a house right next to it surrounding this area. So this just gives you an idea of what this particular neighborhood looks like when it comes to things that are industrial. Per definition, this is an industrial aesthetic part of our neighborhood. Let's go to the right side. This is a garage, very industrial design, very tall. This is probably seventeen feet at this point here. And this structure has been around for maybe a decade or so. These are examples here at the bottom left of, of primary structures that do have the gabled roof. These were taken from Google Maps so that the camera's high, so it's a little bit deception here. These are, these are much taller than they look in this picture. I'm not saying these exceed any limit, but the ridge would certainly be very similar in height to the ridge of the carport that I'm looking to build. And just right down the street, if you just look to the right, you can see we're surrounded by apartment complexes. This one particularly is a three story. So when we're talking about things that are tall, you know, this is a three-story, you know, apartment complex. And this is right in our neighborhood as well. Let's move on to metal carport examples. So let's start with this left one in this, in this orange box. So this house right here is immediately south of my property. There, he does have a metal carport, similar design. This is a flat roof. This is metal. This doesn't meet the setback. I'm looking to do the same thing. We're right next to each other. He has a cool carport. I'd like to have a cool car, carport as well. Here's another example in the neighborhood of a flat roof style carport. Here's another one in the neighborhood. This one's more of a gable style. This one's also very similar. These are different properties, by the way, right next to each other with, uh, carports. Here's another flat roof carport, very industrial. I like that one. Here's another one. It's very repetitive, right? This is our neighborhood. We're surrounded by carports. We're surrounded by tall things. Not one of these pictures looks the same. Every house is different. All right, last but not least. So this is a carport on Waverly Street. This one is in, in the R one zone. Houses around it is also in the R one zone. This carport is similar in square footage and design to the carport that I'd like to build. This one exceeds twelve foot. This number is actually incorrect. If you do the math, it's about fifteen and a half feet measured between the ridge and the eve. All these permits were approved for this, for this build here. Right? So I'm looking to, to have this same privilege to build something like this, not as big. But these permits were certainly approved. And this is right in the neighborhood. Here are some examples of variances that were done within the last couple of years that had similar requests. These were not in the neighborhood, but this board has certainly seen these where there were examples of things that were less than the required setback, less than five inches, less than two feet, exceeding the height by six feet for accessory structures. Here's some good examples of those for heights as well, exceeding it by two feet, exceeding it by nine and a half feet, exceeding it by six feet. All these variances were approved. I like to highlight just finding number three, that granting of this variance shall not constitute any grant of special privileges. So I'm just looking to have the same ability to build a carport on my property. And I think the last comment I wanted to talk about was maybe if we look at this view here, this is my property here. Actually, I have a better one. This is my property here. This is where the carport's gonna be. The only person that may be affected by some kind of mountain view would be the one immediately south. There's no way any other of the, any of these neighbors would in any way be affected by the height of the carport, especially since I'm only exceeding it by one foot nine inches. So if you go ahead and just look at that mountain view, here we are on the left. This is where the carport will end. You do see a bunch of power lines, shrubbery HVAC system. This is my house. And then you do have a chimney, right? This, this is not a mountain view by any means. So that's just, that's just what, it's one thing I wanted to highlight on. And that is all. Any questions?
Are there any questions? I've got one or maybe two. Um, tell me, uh, how the neighborhood meeting went and, uh, how you addressed any concerns that were expressed in that meeting?
So I held the meeting and there were, there were four attendees. And I, I presented very similar slides that I did today. There were some objections. It was more of a, they didn't seem that strong. They said, what if you did this? What if you did that? What if you painted it this color? And it was just a lot of what ifs and really those comments that were sent in that I read all of them. I was really surprised by that and I really see now the dynamic in the neighborhood I live in um, of the people that are around me. So it's, it's a little bit disappointing. Um, but the, but in terms of the neighborhood itself, neighborhood meeting, it went well, in my opinion. I did not expect to see these types of comments at all. And I wish we were able to have more conversations. But I left my phone open, my emails open. No one, uh, reached out to talk about this stuff. Neighborhood meeting was done. It was finished and, and then now we're here today.
But just as a follow-up, based upon all those comments, um, it sounds like you haven't taken the initiative to respond in any way. You haven't modified your project in any way. You haven't, uh, asked, what, asked any of them whether they might be satisfied with, uh, with the project if you made some kind of compromise, anything like that? Did any of that happen?
There, there was a, a request to change the color of the roof of the carport to a more natural brown. Um, and I think that may have helped. When I look at the comments, none, none of it had to do with the color. And I really can't reduce the height, right? It would serve no purpose if I did that. And the location, there's, this is the most reasonable location. Any other location would still require a variance. So in terms of what they wanted me to do, it just really wasn't feasible. It would make it unusable and it would cause other issues um, down the road if I, if I just followed exactly what they wanted.
Okay.
Anybody else have any other questions for the applicant?
Mr. Dawson, I do.
Yes.
Um, yes, Mr. Santana, thank you for your presentation. Um, I am concerned a little about the aesthetics, so I'd like to know, I know the height of the accessory building should not exceed twelve feet, but can you tell me what the height of your residence is at the moment? So I can get an idea of how this thirteen foot eight inch structure would compare to the height of the house.
Yeah, so the primary residence is eleven foot tall.
So even, uh, an accessory structure that was um, not needing a variance would be slightly taller than the height of the house.
That's right. Is it, it is a single story, single sloped house, so it is pretty low.
Okay. And what about the trees on your property? They look rather mature. Can you give an estimate of what their height is?
Yeah, there's some mesquite trees on the west side. Those are probably around seventeen feet tall. There's a palm tree on the southeast side. That's around the seventeen to eighteen foot height. And then there's some jerry trees in the front that are about fourteen feet tall.
All right. And, um, the structure that you showed in your drawings shows it to be a rather open structure with simply a roof that has a short edge on it. Is that correct? Or is it going to be blocked much further down from the top of the roof?
No, that's, that's pretty close to what it will look like. That's just a cartoon, but in terms of the design, it, it will just have a roof over the top. All the four sides will be opened. So it does look pretty similar to that image.
Okay, and one last question, um, either at the present time or if this variance were denied, would you still be parking your RV and your boat in the location that you're proposing to put this carport in?
Yes, that'll be the permanent location of where I park those items.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions for, uh, Mr. Santana? Hearing none. Uh, okay. Mr. Santana, thank you very much for your presentation. Um, and I'll open the floor to anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this variance. Seeing none, um, I'll now open the floor to anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the variance. Doesn't seem to be anybody there either. Yes.
There was a hand up, uh, Greg, Nishaga, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name that wishes to speak.
Excuse me, sir, uh, I raised my hand.
Okay, uh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. Um, I was hoping you would speak up. Uh, could you, uh, I can't see any picture of you, so I'm gonna assume you're gonna raise your right hand. And, uh, there you are, uh, and swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you?
I do.
Okay, uh, floor is yours. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you so much for allowing me to speak. My name is Gregory Mashaga. I, uh, I reside at five eight three four East Edison Street. Uh, I am within that circle and, uh, uh, our, my objection is, is to the, uh, the actual size of it. It, it's going to be a very conspicuous structure from Edison Street. Um, let me show you a picture. I, I ran outside and took these photos. One moment. So I hope you can see this photograph.
It's not appearing on my screen, no.
Uh, oh, it's out of focus, darn. Hold on a second. Uh, oh, that's because of the background.
Right there.
Yeah, I, I have my background blurred unfortunately, but that, that is what the, uh, that's a view from my front yard. Uh, sorry about that. Uh, the, the structure is going to be twice as high as the fence. And the structure is about, going to be about half the size of my house. Uh, my house is sixteen hundred square feet. That's, her is about eight hundred square feet. So it's just an impressive size. Uh, the views that, uh, Mr. Santana showed of other structures did not have, it, we're, we're not in the sightline of other streets. Uh, that alley behind Mr. Santana's house is the extension of Edison Street. So all the residents on Edison Street, that's why most of those, uh, in opposition or, uh, residents on Edison Street, we're going to have to look at this structure every day as we drive down our street. Uh, as we sit in our front yards, you know, um, we do a lot of porch sitting, especially since the pandemic. We do a lot of porch sitting, especially since the pandemic. Uh, so it's just going to be a very obvious structure. See, what my other notes here. Yeah, so and it's not so much that the size of the structure itself is uh, our objection, but it's so close to the lot lines, we won't have that perspective of yeah, I mean, you know, it's going to be right there. Uh, so that, that's our complaint. And since our, our neighborhood on the other side of Sahara is mostly mid-century, that was part of a development called Rainbow Vista Development. Um, most of those houses are very similar in in, in style. They're about by basic floor plans. Most of the houses are only eleven feet tall. My house is eleven feet. The one, one of the structures with the higher gabled, gabled roof was, is one of my neighbors. And is closer to Sahara. But again, it's not like in the sightline while you're driving down a street. And so that's why most of the neighbors on my street are against it. Unfortunately, a lot of those people were not allowed, able to be here because they're working families or they're elderly and you know, kind of technologically challenged. So I'm pretty much the spoke spokesperson. Uh, we did address these concerns. We, we were making suggestions at the uh, original meeting, the neighborhood meeting. You know, what if you did this? What if you did that? That was because we were opposed to that issue and we're offering, trying to be constructive and offer constructive issues. Um, and one other thing that came out at the uh, neighborhood meeting was that uh, Mr. Santana purchased the house in two thousand and three. Uh, he said that he had the intent of building a structure to, you know, a shade structure for his assets. And uh, he, he said that he failed to do any due diligence as to any code issues that might come up. And so many of the neighbors feel that we shouldn't have to look at the structure because you know, basically he bought a piece of property that would have to go through zoning variances to accomplish his, his goal for that property. Um, so you know, that's pretty much my uh, case in conclusion. I'd just like to say thank you for letting us speak. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions for Mr. Mashada? Hearing none. Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this variance?
Is there an opportunity to rebuttal on those comments?
Uh, yes, sir, there are. I was waiting to see if there was anybody else going to speak about that. I see none. So yes, sir, this is your opportunity to rebut.
Cool, thank you. So I'd like, just to address some of those comments that Mr. Greg stated about, about the carport addition. Um, so I guess I'm just a little confused on where do we draw the line behind? Where you, where you can proclaim the need to have something look a certain way, right? Cause he, the picture he was trying to show with his phone, you can see that picture was really up close to my property line, right? Right on Sahara. It wasn't in front of his house. So I'd like to understand, like, where do you draw that line? Cause if you drive thirty seconds north, all of a sudden you're in front of this giant cemetery, right? If you drive a little bit further east, all of a sudden you're in front of Target and Costco. At what point do you say, you know, I really don't have the ability to really make real claims on how something should look, right? And I also think it's very subjective to say something doesn't look good. Cause in my opinion, I think the carport is really modern and it's contemporary. And I think it will fit the neighborhood really well. Again, it's a subjective opinion. And let's see what else. When you're standing in front of, when you're looking out of Greg's house, you're not going to see the carport. Unless you walk out to the street or the mailbox and then veer to the east. That's the only time that you're gonna see it. But at that point, from your property line, from your house, that's kind of where I draw my line. Where I don't really have the ability to say, hey, your house needs to look a certain way because that's how I want it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. All right, I think that concludes the uh, public hearing portion of this. Uh, and I will close that and I will open the board to discussion. Anybody have anything to say about this? Bonnie?
Of course. I guess normally for a variance, seeing the number of protests would have made me think twice about agreeing to a variance because of um, the fact that there are adjacent residents who are opposed. But when you consider the fact that this structure is really um, the minimum required for this vehicles that um, Mr. Santana would like to park there. And that they are the items that are going to cause the most obstruction to people's views. I really don't see that the structure itself is really detrimental to the aesthetics of the neighborhood. I'm not up to making a motion right at this moment, but I I think that the request for this variance is reasonable at this point.
Yeah, anyone else? Yeah, I would put my two cents in. Yeah, I, I tend to agree with you, Bonnie, that I think compelling arguments was a lot of the pictures that Mr. Santana showed in terms of the other structures that are within the area and they drive by every day. And see some even bigger and larger and more overwhelming than, than what he's planning to put back there. Uh, yeah, I would be, intend to be in favor of the variance.
I agree with both Bonnie and Bruce's comments. I went through the protests in detail. One by one and also looked at the Google street view and did some virtual walking around and looking at um, Mr. Santana's property from different angles to ascertain potential impacts to the view. And frankly, I just noticed that the trees were pretty tall and that there were a lot of other things that would, that are already obstructing the mountain views that people are referring to. Um, so I, I feel similarly supportive of the application. I feel it's the minimum required for relief. It does not grant any special privileges. Um, and it doesn't pose a detriment to the neighborhood.
Well, I'll just add my two cents and that is I'm a bit torn by this. Um, but not torn that badly that I couldn't support a motion to approve. And if it got a second, I, I would support that.
Well, being the chair, I cannot form a motion. So Bonnie?
Um, yes, um, actually, um, I just want one clarification from staff. And that this variance for the height is for a carport. So for example, the applicant couldn't come in at a later date and put in a full enclosed carport under this variance. Is that correct?
Yes, Ms. Paulus, that is correct.
Okay.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, I can. So this variance is really for the carport itself, which is really a fairly open structure.
It's specific to this project. Yes, thank you.
Then I'll move that we grant the following variances in case C ten twenty-four oh six. Allow the relocation of a shed with reduced side perimeter yard setback from ten feet to zero feet. As measured to the west lot line to allow the construction of a carport with a reduced side street perimeter setback from ten feet to eight inches as measured from the west to the west property line. Um, allow the construction of a carport with a reduced perimeter yard setback from seven feet eleven inches to zero feet nine inches as measured to the south lot line. And to allow the carport construction with a height of thirteen feet nine inches measured from design grade to the midpoint of the eve and ridge of the pitched roof, which exceeds the maximum height of twelve feet. For the attached detached accessory structure as shown in the submitted plans. Um, this variance, I think, is reasonable because of the size of the property, the location of the residence that's there, the desire to keep the mature trees. Um, and that this granting of the variance is really not an exception in this neighborhood and doesn't grant this individual any other rights that other people have and that I feel like this is not self-imposed. And for those reasons, I'd like to move that we grant the variances in this case.
I need to hear a second.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Uh, all those in favor, say aye. It looks like that's unanimous is unless we need to call names. Do you, should we call the names?
I believe that was unanimous, but if anybody wants to contradict us, we can call roll.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it. Okay, the, the motion passes. Uh, and thank you very much. And I wish Mr. Santana all the luck. So that is that. Fumbling around here. That's that. We can either adjourn or is there any other business?
There's no other business items, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, then we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.